The drive home wasn't very fun, but.
They'll they'll want to like that. Like it's made a bit, I we.
It's on.
I'm sure she's not interested, but I'm happy to talk to about my own major thing.
Well, she, I might take you up on that because there's a confusion about whether she's like like more chemical like.
Like they can't decide, they're so young.
It's hard.
We're good. Okay. Sorry about that, everybody. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Euclid Township Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting for the month of June. Welcome, everybody. Good to have some faces in the audience. Um, I'll go ahead and jump right into our business meeting for today or our business agenda. First on the list is discussion on chapter ninety-nine Brush Grass Weeds and Trees. Mr. Kegel?
I'm glad to see that it's interesting topic. Wow. You know, we, we have chapter ninety-nine, which deals with brush grass weeds and trees. Outlines a variety of different aspects. And, you know, I think we've had some conversation internally about uh what this should necessarily look like if this the way the ordinance is structured is the appropriate way. There's more things we want to do, less things than we want to do. And so we thought we would just kind of have an open discussion around around this uh interesting chapter of our ordinances. And so we put together kind of a set of specific questions that we wanted to walk through. Obviously, there's other things that we want to talk about as relates to this ordinance. Certainly, but from the staff perspective, as we reviewed it, we were kind of looking for a little bit of feedback and guidance. Specific areas. So like the first, the first question is, you know, the ordinance had an element that says grass and weeds can't be higher than twelve inches. And so, you know, is that, is, is that the right number? Should we maintain or revise that whole inch height limit on the grass and non-hermital plants? Think that there's a number of different. As we, as we started talking through this, there was a lot that kind of came out. Uh, you know, should there be different standards for front yards versus backyards where maybe people aren't seeing that? Uh, you know, do we need to allow for certain setbacks from sidewalks or roadways? Uh, and then I don't necessarily care how high the grass gets after them. You know, there's always, always a concern. If the grass gets too high, it may end up being an habitat for for, for certainly animals that that may present some public health concerns. Uh, certainly, there's a fire risk when, when we get dry, that tall grass presents a fire risk.
That's, that's a, that's a fallacy, though. Just. That native grasses actually decrease the fire risk. And, and mowing grasses and letting it lay down, like if it's dry, that would increase fire risk. So like, well, maybe it would decrease. And non-native grasses might increase fire risk. So there's a lot of misinformation about that.
So we kind of wanted to have that conversation, right? Uh, way that we looked at it, we could maintain the current twelve inch height limit, kind of do nothing, just keep it. We could increase the height limit. Some, there are some of these values out there that allow for up to eighteen inches. We could allow exceptions for specifically managed ecological landscapes. To a little bit further in, kind of talk about. There, I know we've had a lot of conversation around lawn to meadow conversions and getting into that. So those two may actually go together. You know, that there may be some, some interplay there.
Let's start off with a, a quick operational question about this. Like, so we've had this ordinance on the record. Now, the only times I ever hear about this ordinance is there's two, uh, so abandoned houses that, and, and it's basically our way of getting onto the property and it's kind of like our leverage point to start making them do something. And then secondarily, responding to neighbors that hate each other and are calling each other because the, the yard's too high. I mean, and, and but there may be more enforcement than I'm aware of. Is there any more enforcement in that?
Do have a few properties in our township where there are people living there that refuse to mow. Um, I ha- every year I have the same addresses that I have to go visit. Um, they have to send letters to. Um, I do have a list right now that I have to go out probably tomorrow to look at. And there's like six residents on there. Now, out of those six properties, one of them is an abandoned house. So um, to your point, yes. Um, but just looking at other townships, like Bobby said, we were thinking, um, like maybe raising it just.
I just wanted to get an idea of like, what's the scale here?
We do, and we do have some residents that, um, like Bobby said, neighbors don't like each other. So they'll call when it's like thirteen inches maybe. And like, and it's been hard because people can't get out because it's been raining so much. So we try to give them the benefit of the doubt and wait a little bit before we send that letter. But um, that's what we've been running into. So that's all summer long.
Have we had any properties where there are what I would consider a managed ecological landscape or native plantings or meadow conversion that has received complaints that the township has been asked to look at?
We had this, and this is going back one, that, um, and this is when, uh, Mr. Hanley was here. We went out to look at it because we kept getting the same phone call. And it was, um, it wasn't even the whole front yard. It was just a patch of front yard. And I think that they were trying to actually have the native plantings there. So we did not.
But that's not a common.
We, yeah, we did not proceed with a letter or anything to them.
Correct.
I mean, I think that there's definitely a benefit to looking at the ordinance and making it more friendly for sustainable and meadow conversions, just because I know there's a lot of interest in that and um, a lot of programs available within the county that assist homeowners with doing that in a way that is you know, a positive thing for the environment. Um, I don't know if that's best done through just allowing an exception or rewriting the ordinance. I would kind of defer to you guys on the best way to implement the grass situation.
I mean, I'm in favor of a setback, not necessarily height restriction. I mean, as, as long as it looks like it's intentional and maintained and there's some setback. I think one of the, um, model ordinances you guys sent in the packet was like twenty-five or fifty feet, which is kind of overkill, or especially there's so many smaller pro- properties. Um, but yeah, I think as opposed to just having a height requirement, maybe we should. I, I found one, a model ordinance from Salisbury, Maryland, that I thought was really good. Um.
What, what, what's kind of setback? Are you thinking from, from other properties or from the road or from?
In a way, I'm thinking.
The right way, okay. So we always have a problem with setbacks from the neighboring properties. And I don't know, we, we'd want that as well. I don't know. I, I, I do personally find them problematic, but I can imagine neighbor like measuring the five feet, whatever, whatever it is. Because then if you don't have a setback, they're going to measure the property going. So either way, I think if they're not happy with it, then they're gonna, they're gonna find another way.
How much feedback are you looking to receive today? I mean, I just kind of imagine we're kicking off a discussion about how to.
Yeah, yeah, true. And I'm happy to the, I'm not going through. I think there's three specific questions.
Mm-hmm.
Looking for that, that we wanted to open the dialogue one, um, and share some of our thoughts and, uh, you know, maybe I'll run through, run through those and then we can decide whether want to give feedback today or we're just kind of opening this can of worms and we'll revisit it again. Um, but so that, that was the big question around grass was really the, the height. Um, moving to the, to the piece that's related is the lawn to meadow conversions, you know, and the.
So do, did we decide on the height or did we?
No, no, we, no.
You just got gathered feedback on it. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, in terms of lawn to meadow conversions, the decision point that we're looking for feedback at some point really on is should the township allow for the conversion of lawns to naturalized meadows or native plantings? And I, I have a sense, as Tony's whispering and you know, I, I have a sense that the answer is yes, but there's, a- as we were kind of talking those, talking that question through, there's a lot, there's a lot to consider, a lot to think about. If we're going to formalize it, right, there, there's one option of, I mean, we're silent on it right now. I mean, by the letter of the ordinance, you can't really do that because you can't have grass higher than twelve inches. Um, but if, if we're going to go, go down this path, you know, there's, there's certainly the perception of, of maintenance or lack thereof. Well, that's going to increase calls. Now, we've really only had one instance where, where that's, that's taking place. Um, but we need to be thinking about buffer zones or their mode or managed borders that, that need to exist adjacent to sidewalks, driveways, right-of-ways, neighboring properties to really define the area. I think one of the, one of the ordinances that I sent out that, that allows for lawn to meadow conversions requires like a fence. It, it's got to be behind a fence. Um, you know, front yard versus backyard. Should different rules apply for highly visible versus less visible areas? Uh, minimum and maximum area thresholds. Do we, we want to say that there's a minimum or maximum area of conversion that we will allow for? Minimum lot sizes. Do we want to require that, you know, you have to have X number of acres in order to, in order to do a conversion? Um, do we require submission of a maintenance plan, right? And, and these next kinds of, of questions around a, a maintenance plan really really drives to us knowing that that is what is happening versus just neglect or laziness or whatever it might be. Um, you know, questions around timing of mowing. Are there requirements for when mowing needs to occur, like late fall or early spring? Um, how are we going to verify that a meadow is maintained and not creating a nuisance and from the township perspective? And then making sure that conversions, do we require them to show some kind of linkage to local ecological goals or addressing a known stormwater absorption issue? Things like that, right? So some of the, the options that we have that we've thought through were obviously prohibiting conversions altogether and forcing the grass height universally. And that is, like, that's the letter of the law and that's it. Um, allowing conversions if they meet general criteria like setbacks and maintenance or allows, allowing conversions to a formal approval or registration process. So we know about them and their submission of a maintenance plan and, and, um, you know, we're, we're kind of enforcing these things. Uh, so I don't know. I can, we can open that up for conversation or I can move to the next part, point around invasives and yeah, just have a general conversation from there.
I think at least on the, on the idea of permitting process or registration, I, I, you know, I I don't know how enforceable that's going to be. I'm, I'm worried about enforcement with that, like, right, like, you're going to have people do it and we're just going to I would rather sit on a criteria basis and say, you know, this is what if we, and then you put a lot that I don't have a thought on yet, but um, I'd rather have the requirement, minimum criteria that says like, if, if the, if it meets these general criteria, we'll accept that it's a metal conversion. Um, but I don't want people to have to come in here and make foremost because either they won't do it or the, they just.
They'll leave the meadow.
They won't do the meadow or they won't do the registration. And either way, like, we're not really accomplishing what we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
I, I, I am, I am in favor of, of allowing conversions. Um, I think there's some important, like, I do think to be to think about lot size because at some point you're just having you're not creating an ecological area. You're creating like a kind of a, a more rodent area. Well, like, you don't have predators. If you don't have predator, if you don't have, if you don't have enough size to, to generate things being interested in mice. Um.
I think I disagree. I feel like you can have a small pollinator garden.
But, no, but I'm not talking about a pollinator garden. I'm talking about a meadow. But yeah, like a pollinator garden is a garden. That, that's, that's separate. And I think that's fine. Okay.
And I know a lot of the resources in the area that are available for guiding homeowners through this process and certainly the ones that provide financial assistance usually do have a minimum amount of space that the homeowner has to qualify for, or at least in the past, I've seen, you know, through the county program where they offered um, assistance with that, but it had to be, you know, half an acre or something like that. It wasn't just a garden plot size. So.
I'm more in favor of setbacks, like ten feet from the sidewalk and five feet around the edges or something, because if you have a small area and you want to plant native grasses instead of having lawn, like, those are high. And it may not be a, you know, meadow habitat, a large meadow habitat, but it could be a more ecologically sustainable, you know, better for stormwater drainage yard, even though it's small. So.
I agree with those setbacks too. Like, I, I don't really want to make a huge distinction between front and backyards. Um, I think people should be able to do mostly what we allow, if, I mean, if they're property, you know. And I know neighbors might not like everything, but.
I'll say too, with what twenty plus HOAs in the township, I'm sure many of them will not allow this at all. So it's gonna, it's gonna fall to a smaller percentage of neighborhoods that don't have an HOA or that don't have a specific language in their HOA, which I would imagine there generally would be language prohibiting something like this, but that's beyond our.
But this would apply to commercial properties and residential properties. So I mean, there's large commercial properties that have big swathes of lawn that if they wanted to convert to a meadow, I think they should go for it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Like, there's a
The, the Salisbury ordinance that I, I looked up, which I really liked, it did have um, setbacks and it required for the meadow to be cut down at a height of no hu- no higher than eight inches once a year. So to maintain, you know, it has to be cut down once a year. Oh. But it's pretty, it seems, it's not really a whole lot of um, conditions on it. Seems pretty basic. I'm going to email this to you, Bobby.
So it sounds like there's a fair amount of support for definitely allowing it and just kind of picking through the details in the coming weeks to.
Um, and then on the invasive side, you know, we've got a few complaints about bamboo. Um, and, and so the, the decision point really is like, should the ordinance explicitly prohibit or regulate invasive species? Um, you know, there's obviously the question of invasive species. There's non-native and, and one of the things that we threw out there was like, is it non-native plants that cause ecological or economic harm? Distinguishing from nuisance plants versus invasive, there's some non-invasive but fast-growing species that can be problematic, but don't necessarily meet the threshold for invasiveness, like mint. Right? Um, do we look at an authoritative source? Right now we are the SADO. You know, it points to the USDA list. Uh, or do we do a township maintained static list? And there's pros and cons there. It's a static list. What's the update mechanism? It's a little complicated. Uh, yeah, around the, you know, mentioned HOAs, like a lot of this should enforcement just be delegated to HOAs. Uh, for, for, for some of this. Um, and then on, on the regulation type, like, is it prohibiting the planting of new invasive species, which the SADO does now, like under SADO, you can't install non-invasives. Um, or is it control of existing invasive growth? Uh, you know, or is it containment? Uh, we can, we can do nothing where we, where we don't include this in chapter ninety-nine. Uh, but it's in SADO, so it's for anything that comes in. We go in and we can prohibit specific species. We can reference the DCNR or USDA invasive species list. Different, different options there. Obviously, we have the resolution that encourages um, encourages folks to, I think it's no more than to, to have native plants in at least thirty percent of their existing plantings, but that's an encouragement.
I can tell you that current removal of existing bases is going to be unworkable. Uh, like the, the amount of money it takes to, to remove bamboo, the, the, the cost for removing large section of bamboo. I, I knew the price of that and that could be something that is everyone can, can, can do. Um, including myself. So, um, you know, and then there's other like, you know, the honeysuckle, usually we're going to get all the, like, it's just, it's going to be a kind of an arbitrary enforcement mechanism. And, and also it's going to be so burdensome on some people that it's just not not feasible. And then what do we do with that? Right? Like, so you have to remove that. Well, I can't. Oh. Okay, like where are we going to, where are we going to go from there? I mean, I, I do, on the other hand, with bamboo through, speaking of, like, I wouldn't allow planting some of it anymore. Like, if it doesn't stop.
Yeah, I, I mean, in our ordinance in chapter ninety-nine, the, it only refers to barberry bushes. And it says it's unlawful to plant or permit the growth of the bush. Which is not exactly me. You know, it sounds to me like you, it has to stay small or
Right, like you have to cut it back.
Yeah, or you can't put it in the ground. It can't stay in the ground because it's growing no matter what. I mean,
No rain should touch it. Shield it from rain in the sun.
Yeah.
Um, but I agree with Bill as far as like removal, like requirement removal is a lot to ask. Definitely encourage it, but.
Yeah. Um, so I know that we have a robust interest in native plantings in the township and have had a lot of, um, forward momentum with those initiatives. I guess the challenge from the township's perspective is when you get a static list with specific plantings and whatnot, it creates a bit of a nightmare for the township staff that are not trained biologists that have to go out and say, no, that's not blue vermine. That's the, you know, like, oh, well, and we laugh, but like, you know, unfortunately Tara's going to be the one that's sitting there staring at the plant. And, and if we have, you know, eighty complaints that come in about, is that flea bane or milkweed, you know, like it just, it creates a, a situation where it's hard to, to differentiate. Um, I do think between our landscape consultants and our EAC, we do have the ability to create a list that could land somewhere. Um, you know, I, I flipped through this and I immediately gasped when I saw a B-bomb on the nuisance plant list. And I was like, so that's a great pollinator. Um, but I, I do think that there's room for discussion and I know that our EAC is definitely happy to be a part of that discussion. Um, I think we just have to be really cognizant of the enforcement aspect and the type of expertise that we can commit not just through our EAC, of which there's many, but like for their, our actual enforcement arm. So it's kind of finding the happy place between that. Um.
Yeah, I would think, you know, speaking to that, I would like to pass something that we're willing to enforce. It is, is how I want to do it. Like, we, we, we could pass a really strict ordinance, but then like if you were like, ah, we're not actually going to do that to someone, you know, like, then let's not do that.
I believe that, well, I, I believe that like per regulatory purposes, I think noxious and nuisance plants are can be regulated, but as far as invasive plants, I don't think that that I don't think that falls under I don't think it's a legal term at this point. That's
nuisance.
My reading, no invasive.
Oh, invasive.
But I know like DCNR, they have noxious, uh, what's the other word?
Nuisance.
Nuisance. They have a list. So I, I mean, I would be in favor of following a DCNR list, not having our own list, but having a list that's updated, that's more local than like the USDA list. You know, because I think PC, uh, DCNR probably looks at that list too. Sees what's established in Pennsylvania.
I will say too, I mean, if an issue comes up where someone has a robust native garden and meadow plantings and it becomes an enforcement issue or there's complaints, I do think that we should be able to use our experts in the room. And I mean, we have put out so many resources on native plantings and guides on meadow conversions and stuff like that, that like we should lean on that as a resource. Should an issue come in, Tara can say, here's some resources or Tony or someone I'm guessing would be willing to lend their ear on that. Um, again, it's just balancing the day-to-day enforcement stuff with our volunteers' time. And I, it just, we have such a wealth of knowledge in the room. It would be in my opinion, silly not to leverage that into the process.
I would also say if we can delegate the stuff to the HOAs, since it seems to be something that they're similar things are being delegated, but I don't know what are.
I mean, they, they get updated ordinances.
So they do, but the only problem with the HOAs is, um, they have tighter restrictions usually on this kind of stuff than we do. However, they, HOAs, some of them, I'm not going to say all of them. Some of them in the township push it back on us. They don't want to enforce it. So hence, my, my list is so long because I'll say call the HOA, but they told me to call you because they can't do anything when they really can do stuff.
Well, then that's my question is can we make the HOA? Like, I don't want to do this like a, if, if we can't require that HOA do it, or that, or we have no enforcement mechanism, if they decline to do it, then we shouldn't. This is a general statement and, uh, we should, we should keep it true as that.
I do think one of the other things we need to really look at in the ordinance is enforcement and what actions we're going to take if somebody violates the ordinance. Because right now we're kind of in between what we can do and what we can't do.
Right now, right now, we're just waiting. Like they have ten days to fix it, otherwise we can do it, but they're not doing that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, mine, that's why I said at the beginning, I think my, my understanding was that was like kind of so that we can get on abandoned properties. And that's like, that's kind of all the only way really was used.
Okay.
All right. Did that clear everything up for you?
Uh, opening a can of worms.
It is.
I mean, I, I think certain, well, I don't think it's certain, this ordinance is definitely ripe for updating. Just, you know, we've tried it in the past and ran into enforcement issues and it, it kind of became an overwhelming topic. So I'm glad that we're revisiting it. Certainly, I think this is a discussion that you, the EAC can formally provide feedback on in the coming weeks. Um, is there any public comment about this specific species? If you can stand up to the microphone so people online can hear.
Uh, I'm Toni Gorkin. I'm a member of EAC and also volunteer at Longwood where we deal with in the meadow garden invasives and so forth. And the EAC had worked, done a lot of work on trying to provide updates to both me and free ordinances. Um, after listening to some of this, I do have a statement, I'll share it, but I'd like to stress the fact that sustainable practices are evolving heavily right now. It's like changing almost on a week-to-week basis. Meadow, uh, what they call devil's strips along sidewalks, all of those are starting to gather attention for exactly this kind of situation. What do we put there? The push for native plants, all of that. Um, it's evolving and I like to stress, I really like the idea of education rather than enforcement. In other words, if there is someone who has a problem, we do have some expertise where we can either steer people toward information non-confrontational or we can provide information. And maybe that will resolve some of these issues because we are having these conversations outside of these meetings and whatever, on a day-to-day basis. I've had this conversation, these conversations around this kind of thing. Last time I went to Dairy Queen, the last time I went to it's like, it's coming up. Um, our state, and I just want to summarize, we did work on two ordinances, one that was on weeds and one was on trees. Um, and around weeds, we wanted to encourage attention to invasive and prohibited, prohibited species. Uh, but we wanted Uh, but we wanted to encourage removal practices to be uh, less impactful to biodiversity. And uh, promote less spraying and use of herbicides and encourage them as the last resort. Rather than the last draft or whatever that you thought about that, because we are starting to understand the widespread impact. That you're going to have by spraying on this weed that's in the middle of your drive. Where that's going to go, how it's going to get into the water, how it's going to impact the yards around you. So if we can look at particular recommendations we're making to encourage. Uh, sensitivity around spraying and pesticides and those kinds of things. And to respect the native plants and flexible pipelines that will allow pollinator gardens. Uh, I've got a known old may patch in my yard that is evolving right now into something, it's not a meadow yet. I don't know what it's going to be, but it's going to be more native plants. It's evolving and that's what's happening in the community, people have patches and things that are evolving. And rather than set a limit and say, you know, it can't be this high or whatever, I think we need to. Continue to be educated around what is evolving in the practice. On trees, uh, I'd like to stress that we respect the special character that the trees provide in Eucon Township. As landscape and historical valuable. Things, but also respect the environmental services that they provide. Um, shade, energy savings, CO2 storage and whatever, a lot of that is starting to find its way more and more. Into the literature about the importance of trees. And curb the removal of existing trees as much as possible. Um, understanding some of the issues around it, but try to curb the uh, removal of existing trees. Mature ones especially, and especially during development projects. Encouraging uh, planting and use and prevention of native trees. We do have a resolution out there that encourages seventy percent native plantings in yards. It's not an ordinance, but it's a resolution. And that we ensure that specifically the ordinance is governing landscaping for developers. Recognize that they're not going to have success with two feet of space. And a sapling, that they need to, the ordinance is need to encourage them to allow substantial. Space and environment for the trees that they do plant actually can grow and aren't just token visual things. I'm handing this to everybody, we also want to volunteer, we have extensive experiments, Blue Rattus. Kathy is, we, Kathy and I are both PA master naturalists, she is in charge of the, the project for the meadow at Rhonda. You know that I'm in charge of Harding Euclid. Jim works for Natural Lands, they're working with volunteers with, well, working with trees and invasive plants. And has initiated an effort here in Bear Park to start removing invasives. So we are becoming more educated. Have a lot of hands-on experience and did put some effort in through the EAC and as individuals and would like to continue doing that. To promote native planting, more ecological, sustainable practices. And an understanding that they are evolving and they may change next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Is there any other public comment? Can you step up Kathy? Thank you.
You have a trace of the EAC, I just want to invite you all to go and see the meadow in Rhonda. If you go up the road and make a left on New Common, it's right on the left, it's spectacular.
Thank you guys. You speak the truth, you volunteer a lot and we appreciate the time you put in, certainly we'll lean on your expertise and as we go through this discussion. Alright, if there's no other public comment, we'll move on to number two, which is review and discussion on the youth volunteer program.
Uh, put together a policy establishing guidelines for individuals under the age of eighteen who wish to volunteer with the township. Essentially making sure that we have all the right clearances in place, it expands, um. It, it allows, I think right now we allow anybody sixteen or older to volunteer. This expands it to allow anybody fourteen and older to volunteer, but differentiates the kind of work that they can do. So we don't want fourteen-year-olds, fourteen and fifteen-year-olds on Route one hundred cleaning up trash, but they can work in the. In the park and clean up trash and things like that. So just kind of wanted to, and, and then it spells out. There's differences in, in the background checks required for employees who are supervising or working with minors. Versus uh, adult volunteers who are supervising or working with minors. So that's kind of the, the, the policy. Um, some of the questions I had, you know, are, you okay with the age range of fourteen to seventeen versus where we are now?
I am, yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's great.
We have a dual requirement for consent form and an application for, for, for youth. Should we require an application, should we consider a parent orientation or briefing before allowing volunteerism, is that overkill?
I feel like an orientation is maybe a bit far, I, I think it's pretty standard, I mean, having kids that volunteered at younger ages. As an apparent, I know I'm going to have to sign off on, you know, a permission slip or, or a waiver or whatever. Um, but I think that we're going to deter people from coming out if they have to. Do an orientation or a session like that, I mean, unless it's a very specific type of volunteering that requires something.
Right, they should get the discretion.
Specific to that task, and, and it's like a higher risk or something like that, I, I'm not sure that. I would support an orientation, but I think the waiver and the, even an application would be okay.
Agreed.
Agreed.
I did have one question about the clearances for the adult volunteers. Um, I know for like sports, I, I have to do clearances and all, but those are all free. Um, because I'm doing it, they're, they're the exception for the, are these, um, because. Would these be free or they, or they have to pay for these clearances?
The volunteers, it would be free. I think you're allowed one every five years. But the, the staff, we'd have to pay for that.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted, I was going to say if the volunteers have to pay, we might want to re-invest.
Are we okay with kind of the permitted activities delineated by each group? Essentially, uh. Fourteen to fifteen can assist with community events, general clerical work and cleanup events within township parks and trails. Provided their duties are non-technical or not, and are not near a roadway or driveway. And then. Every, you know, sixteen and seventeen can do all of those things. But they can operate motorized equipment or handle hazardous materials or work in conditions that might be. Prohibited under the child labor laws.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
I think those are the. The, the, the other question that kind of had was. You know, there's a, there's an element in here that talks about volunteer dismissals. And uh, I, I guess, you know, the township preserves the right to terminate any volunteer assignment at any time at its full discretion. And I guess the question is, you know, are, should that be solely administrative? Or would the board like to provide an appeal option there?
I, I don't think, personally, I don't think that should be at your discretion, or however doubt you delegate to on that.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know the answer to this and I know it's dangerous to ask a question you don't know the answer to already. Do we allow? Like our authorities, boards and commissions, do you have to be eighteen? Or do we allow?
I'd have to refer to the specific ordinance establishing each committee.
I feel like it doesn't say in the ordinance, the establishment ordinance, like.
I mean, I would absolutely love to have youth ambassadors on our committees.
Absolutely.
Um, so if that's something that we need to change to allow for, or if it would just fall under a volunteer. Well, you know, because I guess it depends if they were to be. A voting member or just a contributing member on the committee, but I think we would have to look specifically to each. The ordinance establishing each one.
Okay.
I can't remember that we've ever had someone be interested other than just participating in a committee meeting. My time at least, sadly.
Well, we got a few kids this year to come out for community day, you know, I think that's probably where, like that's one of the areas where they can get some hours for volunteer work. So they might, that might generate interest um, in the future, I would imagine EAC could possibly be this similar.
Students come out to meetings before, but they were not like applying to serve on the EAC.
Well, we're, yeah, I think the community wants these people to come back and be a little more committed. But I don't, I don't know, all they, we're meeting tonight, so I'll discuss that.
Alright, is there any public comment? Alright, we'll move on to number three, review and discussion on trash survey.
I'll say another. Oh, six months ago, we transitioned to a new trash provider, uh, we thought it would be a good idea to. Do a short survey just to kind of gauge how it's going, we, we know we certainly had. Far less complaints uh, about missed trash in service. But, you know, came up with uh, this kind of. A handful of questions here, nine questions in, in total. That we were, we were thinking about having an online survey for, we put out a postcard. Today, encourage folks to go and, and complete the survey. I, I guess I'd start with, do you have any specific feedback on the questions before I get into some of the. The more um, pointed questions that you've had.
Thought they were good questions, I mean, I, I think doing a survey is. A good check-in with the residents because we have had a rocky road with trash, not just. Not necessarily with this specific provider, but over the last several years altogether. Um, regionally, it's been an issue, so I think it serves as a good data point for seeing. Now that we've settled in a little bit, what issues we can fine-tune a little bit better, but I thought they were good questions.
I, yeah, I don't have any problems with questions.
Do we want to gauge interest on additional services like e-waste, household hazardous waste, composting options?
I think that's a great idea.
So we're, we're having the first, you know, we're having our first e-waste event on the twenty-first uh, of this month. You know, my hesitation on asking the composting question is. If, if it were to be a municipal service, we don't have anywhere to really take it. Like, we don't have any land that, we don't have. Two hundred and forty acres that we could turn into a composting space or anything like that. Uh, but maybe asking about electronic waste and household hazardous waste. Had a question about that, if there's interest in, in those services or people.
I mean.
Where to go for those services?
I mean, the only thing is, I, I mean, if you ask, are you interested in household? I mean, the answer should be yes, like how much are you willing to pay for it is really the question that, that we're trying to get the answer to, right?
Well, yeah, but like if we can gauge interest and we can look into options and then, you know, discuss those at a public meeting. I, I think the compost question, Upper Euclid compost, it's like a contract thing, I don't know where it goes or. But I believe that it's held somewhere.
Aren't they doing like a pilot program, yeah, I don't know if it's. Registration is through the municipality or if it's just a third-party service that they're offering to residents to try and then, you know, the township does not organize. I, I agree with Bill, I think the question is, if you say, would you be interested in e-waste or whatever, people will say yes, maybe. A more specific way of asking it is like, how often would you utilize that? Like, does the township offer one a year, do we do it quarterly, like is it something that someone would use as a one-time service? But I agree, I, I just feel like someone will say, yes, I would use. This is like shredding, like you, well, sure, I would shred my stuff, but not every day.
Would you want all, would you want all that event once a year?
Add an additional fee to your, to your trash bill or something?
We'll, we'll play with that a little bit. You know, one of the questions I guess we had was. Are you comfortable with, refund the question here? You know, we asked to target the previous provider. How's the service, you okay with that?
Yeah.
And are we comfortable asking a cost question?
Yes, I'm not actually, I mean, I, I, I just think, I'm talking with lots of residents, I feel like. First of all, you don't know how many people are going to respond, but. Some people are willing to pay more, some people aren't, but it's, is it fair to let all the. Survey respondents decide for the entire community if everybody pays more?
I, I don't think they're deciding though, I think they're just letting us know, like we're, we're, all we're doing is getting feedback on like, hey, if, if like ninety percent of people said we'd be willing to pay twenty-five dollars more a quarter. That gives them as a clear signal, if it's all muddled, then.
Yeah.
That's, you know, still up to us, you know, but it's interesting, you know.
A data point for us to consider, and I do think it's pertinent because. I mean, we, we've been through the wringer with this over the last year and with the cost of, of service going up with similar service. Like I, I've had to have conversations with people that are upset about the new service, but don't realize that. Continuing as we were was not an option, so it's like. I, I think that's an interesting data point.
And also, I mean, everyone wants services, but like, it's, I think it's interesting here, okay, so how, you want all this or you're happy with all this or, or whatever, but like. What are you willing to pay and, and, and that really is the most relevant, when, when we have to make a decision the next time this contract around, I think that's our most relevant conversation. Because we can find any level of service, but it's, it's that one of the.
Like the idea of encouraging less trash.
I agree, but.
I'm not in favor of like a pay to pollute scheme, you know, like, so.
I, I agree, but this is really just a data, I think this is collecting data for us.
I just thought I won't have to say no to, you know, increasing the fees for everybody if all of our data points to, everybody wants to throw out more trash.
Oh, yeah, yes.
So maybe we, maybe we, we add some language to that question, clarifying the fact that, you know. Have to play around with the wording, but essentially like. We're, we're just trying to.
So I think you maybe, you can break it up, like, I mean, one thing, maybe as a data point in terms and ask question, like how much more would you pay for a bulk item? Pick up, because that's one of the ones we've heard the most about, right, like maybe a little more specific, because I think it's a very, because I read it now again with. It's, it's a very general question and, you know, I think it depends on what you're specific.
Or maybe waiting to get this, gather this data point since it's been, I mean, we used to have trash bulk, one item a week. And now we're doing one item a month and people, I mean, it's only been six months, but maybe people will get used to. You know, recycling their bulk items, you know, recycling or whatever it is and maybe after a year. They might feel differently than after six months as far as managing their household waste and bulk items, I, I don't know.
Another piece with the timing too, I know we're getting ready to launch a pretty big park survey. So I don't know if at some point we have multiple surveys out, if it dilutes the overall participation. Or if we should try to do them back-to-back or just something to think about to maximize participation. Although I have a feeling a trash survey would be quite popular.
Everyone loves to talk.
Alright, is there any public comment regarding the trash survey?
Once a year, they have an organization that comes in from Philadelphia and they set up a big parking lot like this and it's former prisoners. And people bring all their electronics, they wanna get rid of their broken or whatever. And then certain ones are free, certain ones you have to pay like ten or twenty minutes for them to take it. And then they learn how to, you know, how to fix things. And that's once you get the, they stick to that, so that might be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that's, that's actually what we're gonna be offering on the twenty-first, which is the e-waste event where you'll be able to bring your electronic items. Turn them in. I don't know if, I don't know that they're gonna be used for training or properly disposed of it, but.
But another thing is hosting a repair shop. I know it doesn't Phoenixville have a repair.
Yeah.
Yeah, repair clinics, like, I would be interested in the township, you know, or lending, tool lending libraries, things to kind of just make items accessible and free and not everybody has to buy one. To fix broken stuff.
All right, we'll move along to number four. Rossi Master Plan Project Update.
So, I'm sure Laura was kind of building in on a few things, maybe not. Connecting through steering committee meeting so far with JMT, the engineering firm. As in charge of the master plan for Rollsea Mine. The committee is made of township staff, representative of the LA, one from Christ First Church. One from Hartland, another from Dark and residents from each neighborhood surrounding Rollsea Mine, Bill Park. And we're trying to get two downtown high school students on the committee as well, but it's proving kind of difficult. So, JMT, our last meeting that we had was
Quick question for, for Danny, for the Danny Town representative, um, do they have to be Euclid?
Resident?
We hadn't talked about that, though it might be better to have them.
Sure. If we don't have anyone, I mean, I could.
We have identified them, it's just with the end of year scheduling. Last meeting was during the school day, so hopefully things will be more.
So you might have the, the.
We'll see. But the last meeting that we had, we had discussed the survey that Laura just mentioned. We, they got a draft together, got feedback from the steering committee. Should hopefully get that tracked with all those changes today to get that out to the committee and do a final review. So the hope is to get that survey about this. They wanna make sure there's plenty of time for community day. Our next steering committee meeting, which will be at the community day to hopefully get some data from that to really show what people wanna see in Rollsea Park. And then just, you know, certain improvements with line and all that can be. So this month and the month of July, JMT will be conducting key person interviews. It will include somebody from the magnet, well, this is a plant that can handle try around magnet. Manager from Wawa, all three school principals, downtown east high school athletic director. Lead pastor at Christ First, even this person in charge of facilities at Christ First. First man. Chief employees, Ben. EAC chairperson, Armin Rec chairperson, Norm from Telpic Bridge, just because he does all the maintenance at Lion. And Lionville Shopping Center, LPH to be assured of. We default to delete any apartments. So we're gonna do the survey, be able to do it there. Just give, you know, information on the process of everything, where to. Which truly is also marketing, doing posts for the website and social media to help aid everybody on area and process. Kind of how long this, you know, process takes with the planning. I know a lot of people think that decisions that possibly will lead to being a state, it's a licensing, so. Session to be determined on the first level of meeting.
Great, thank you.
There's been a lot of excitement amongst the committee and I think that a really robust plan for soliciting public feedback through the surveys and like being onsite at the park and talking to kids. They have a lot of different ideas for how they, they have a lot of experience with working with kids to get their feedback. So I know that was really important to us and I'm excited to see what they come back with and ultimately ends up happening there.
So have we, I, this all sounds great, so I'm really encouraged by where we go with this. Have we, I've been called, I heard you call it Rossy Park and I'm just like, is that the name we're going with? So have we, should we start thinking of like what we wanna name, what we wanna name it?
I think part of a sale agreement.
Oh, it does? That was part of the sale? I didn't, I missed that. Okay.
Target Park still has no name.
You don't like, you don't like just Target Park?
We just call it Target Park, it was never named.
Another survey.
I don't have a name in hand. I was just, I was just, but I didn't realize, I didn't realize we'd, we'd already committed to the name. So that's fine. I mean, that's what everyone will know about it.
Did we include Dark in the conversations at all? Because I know we, you know, use them as our recreation consortium. Okay, okay. Yeah, like as a key stakeholder in, or discussion, somebody to contact.
Yeah. They serve on the committee. Great. Any public comments? Oh, okay. Moving along to number five, discussion of the twenty twenty-six budget development process. Man, we're like really
Yeah.
Getting it all in before summer. It's intense. Need a snack. I'm kidding, kidding.
So what we're proposing is in August, we'll work on capital and personnel. And then in our August workshop meeting, talk about revenue projections with you, what, what we think that's gonna look like. September, we'll review the capital and personnel with, with the board in the September workshop meeting. Uh, all the operating budgets will be under by the departments and then we'll review those budgets internally. October, we will review the operating budget with the board during the October workshop. November, present the proposed budget and December, adopt it.
Sounds great. Perfect.
No notes.
Any public comment on the budget development process? All right. June Business Agenda Review.
So we'll have all the usual stuff, then we'll, in terms of reports, we'll have an award presentation to Sergeant Saracini. We will ask for permission to schedule and advertise a public hearing for the cable franchise renewal for Verizon. We'll have an ordinance establishing speed limits on roads in the Picker Creek Industrial Park. We'll also probably have on here one potentially two stop signs, one at Rice and Morton, and then we may have another one to, to add there. We're gonna have approval of a cured and placed contract for point repairs. The treatment plant, that's the holes in the pipes. We are getting a cost of what it would be to completely replace them. So we have comparison of the two options and then a number of land development.
Depending how the planning commission meeting goes on Wednesday night, we will potentially have land development approvals for Calvary Chapel, Love Car Wash. And then possibly permission to advertise maybe a zoning ordinance for Eagleview.
All right. Any board questions or comments? And you will not be here, right?
I will not be.
It's gonna be you and I.
Oh, really? You're not gonna be here?
No, be.
Is there any public comments on the June Business Agenda? Seeing none. Is there any general public comment? All right, then I will move to adjourn the meeting. Call in favor.